Past notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Ad break Bar Press, the Middletown Pass, and the Middletown Campus of the school district website. And the posting of such notice at the August E. Meyer Administrative Offices, at each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call. Mrs. Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Frankel.
Here.
Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Please stand before the committee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to this special meeting of the Middletown Board of Education to vote on a resolution to keep our school election in November. This morning at 8:15, Tony Fiori came to leave with us, and I'm grateful for him. And we are hoping to work together on this issue. And we look forward to discussing this in the future. But for today, what we would like to do is we would like to give you the opportunity for public comment. And hopefully starting with Mr. Fiori.
May I make amends here before we do a public comment. I would just, as the vice counsel, recommend... My coffee or microphone pad working yet? I recommend the Board of Education to have a reservation to consider this a qualitative emergency meeting. It's common my intention that based upon this timeline, I'll just put a record, establish a timeline here. Mid to late Thursday afternoon, the Board of Education received an annual letter from the Minister of Government as recently intended to act as agenda for its organization meeting. That's at 10 AM today. A resolution to change the annual school election from November to move it back to April. Upon information of belief, the administration, working in conjunction with the Board of Education and legal counsel, exhausted every reasonable effort to deliver a notice to the Ad break Bar Press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act in order to duly advertise today's meeting. Upon information of belief, the notice was sent to the press, but it may not have been advertised in the advertising session timely. Notice was referenced in an article on Friday afternoon for even hours prior to the date, quoted by Dr. George acknowledging receipt of that notice. However, out of an abundance of caution under the emergency circumstances as well as the interest of the public at large, I'm recommending that you pass a resolution requiring two-thirds majority vote of this Board of Education with the six members voting in favor simply to call this meeting. Will this meeting continue the purpose to vote on a resolution of his body to keep the annual school election in November? Again, the notice was sent to the paper, however, we're not guaranteeing it was advertised on Friday. It was referenced in an article from Dr. George. It was posted on your website. It was posted at a belief, specifically in locations commonly referred to or public. This is just insurance policy to verify, confirm, or caution. And if it is legally in nature pursuant to law, again, using two-thirds majority vote, notice will be posted again as soon as possible following the calling of the meeting. As I just stated in the minutes, the detailed nature of the urgency, the importance of this issue, which is mainly keeping the annual election in November versus moving it back to April. It's my understanding that if either the governing body and/or the school district has permission to move the election to April, that has to occur one of the four January 21st. So it is imperative based upon the news that we got from the town on Thursday of its intent to change the election today. This meeting has to be called under the urgent circumstances. And the substantial harm to the public, not only will be economic in nature due to the added cost of having to have a separate election begin in April, which was the intended purpose to seek resources from Governor Christie a number of years ago, but it also would have an effect of this franchising certain board members whose terms be cut short by about seven, eight months if the election were changed. So those are reasons that this meeting is called. The only technical issue here is the notice provision. We believe that the Board exhausted every reasonable effort and that it in fact did comply, but just in case, definite recognition. So is your motion to convene this meeting on the emergency exception of the Open Public Means Act?
Your motion first.
When there's discussion.
I have a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
The motion is in.
I have a question before we go. You're asking us to vote on that this is an emergency meeting?
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Now just explain something, make something clear to me because I want to know before I make this vote. This meeting that we're having is just to pass something that we're already doing. Just to re-insist, just to re-stay the same thing.
Correct.
It doesn't hold any weight as far as I'm concerned.
From a legal standpoint, the statute that authorized the change of election from April to November had a provision in it that there had to be a four-year waiting period before either municipal governing body and/or the Board of Education could make a motion or vote to change it back to April.
Right.
That decision, that vote of the governing body of township and/or that did not require anything other than advanced notice to either, and it looks at this statute, of advanced notice to either of the bodies of its options to move the election back to April. The statute...
You're confusing.
Mr. Donlin, can I be direct here? The statute is silent as to whether the Board of Ed and the citizens can object to the movement of the election. And if they do object, whether that objection has any wings.
Yes, right now, nothing has happened. We're just staying the same thing that we always did. We just came here today. Nothing has taken place. Right now, we're just came here to say, we want to keep working on elections when they are. And that's it.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And you're saying it probably as an official resolution, which will constitute an official action of this body.
Okay. I just, that's what I want to know what I'm voting on. So with the vote on clear.
A fair question.
And my question is, coming into this meeting, we were told that this resolution that we're discussing the vote on is not binding. Is that true?
Well, I didn't answer that. The net effect is the law does not say that you have a right of answering them. It's not binding. However, procedurally, it helps to lay a foundation for any challenge if there is action taken to move the election. You have questions?
Okay, all of you here?
Yes, sir. Roll call.
Roll call vote, okay.
I'm sorry. The roll call is to consider this an emergency meeting. You need two-thirds majority votes to have an meeting.
Mrs. Cameron.
No.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Mr. Donlin.
Yes.
Mr. Little.
Yes.
Mrs. Menus.
No.
Mrs. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Stella.
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers.
Yes.
All right, then, proceed with poll commentary.
Okay, I'd like to open the microphone to public comment, starting with Mr. Fiori. He needs to make it through the next meeting, so we're going to give the man the floor. Just push talk.
I'll be sorry, we have automatic one. Thank you to the President, thank you to the Board, appreciate your time and consideration as I have a meeting that I have to attend at 10 AM. I just wanted to, I know it was mentioned, I spoke, had a meeting, and I appreciate the efforts of Mrs. Rogers and Mrs. Stella for meeting with me this morning at 8:15. Look, I can't really, I don't want, I'm not here to opine on the merits of April or November. I'm not here to opine on how we got to this point or debate those issues. Where I'm here today for, in speaking consultation with my township committee is to just present our view as to our intention and what our intentions are and what our intentions never were. And our intentions are to work with this Board of Education, okay? That has always been, and always should, and continue to be, our intentions from the committee's perspective. Our intention was never to take the dialogue away on this subject with respect to moving elections from April or to, from November to April, back and forth. We had significant dialogue when I was on the committee in 2012 in making this initial move. And in consultation, we made that move from April to November with a resolution passed by the Township Committee governing body and then forwarded to the Board of Education that made that initial move. I believe it was 2012. What I would say and what I would ask today, and I will give the opinion of our governing body and give my, as you know, I'm out there and I've made a statement publicly yesterday. Township Committee has no issue tabling our resolution at our 10 AM meeting. The Township Committee was concerned that post the meeting on, I believe it was Wednesday, that based on legal opinion that was given at that meeting that, when this was discussed in September, sorry, December, at the Shared Services Committee meeting, that instead of future dialogue, that this such resolution would have ended that dialogue and prevented further dialogue into closing the issue based on what we were told and heard on that meeting on Wednesday. So what I hear today from Mr. Taylor, who can correct me if I'm wrong, is that that may not be or is not... It's a good code. Is not the case. And if that not be the case, I would ask that you table your resolution. I would ask, and I will commit, and I will pretty much tell you that there will be unanimous support to table our resolution at 10 AM. And we can have further dialogue on the subject. We are not looking to shorten anybody's terms. That was never the intention. It was never my intention to even discuss this in January at a formal special meeting on a Sunday morning or at our reorganization meeting at 10 AM. It is just, you know, again, not going to get into how we got there, but it's how we move forward. And I believe in the best interest of both boards. I believe in the best interest of the township. We table such resolutions based on the legal opinions we've now gotten from our legal counsel and yours. And we get further public input, further dialogue between the board members, and move forward from there. So what I can tell you is based on your actions today, based on, you know, how you guys, this board decides to vote, I have no problem on the Township Committee with a vote to continue that dialogue and not pass the resolution. But clearly, the ball is in your court.
Mr. Fiori, you speak to, I have some members who are very concerned about those comments on Facebook that we talked about earlier and saying that we didn't bring this up in a public meeting. And as we spoke about earlier, we did bring this up twice in public meetings, and the public had an opportunity to speak. And I'd just like you to have your chance to have yours today at the mic about that.
Yeah, so we is, as I just mentioned in the Shared Services Committee, we've received numerous requests post the November election from constituents asking us to reconsider the issue based on the electoral process. Obviously, that was brought up. If there was discussion in December meeting, I was not aware of it. And if there was, then you will have my apology for saying it wasn't made in December. But in January, in this meeting that just passed, okay, I watched the tape. It was not an agenda item. There were two people who did speak, I believe, on the issue, but it was as a non, I guess, a non-agenda item issue. So I did not consider that public input, so to speak. And if there was public, if this was an agenda item in December and it was missed, then it is my mistake, and I'm mad enough to hold up to my mistake. But I reviewed and got feedback from residents who did attend the meeting on Wednesday and also reviewed the tape on Wednesday. And I didn't see that as a public agenda item to have discussion on. I didn't believe this was even going to be in the public till we had further discussions in Shared Services regarding it. Never expected to even be speaking about this.
And that is what we intended. We intended to discuss it further in public and vote on it in the January 15th meeting.
If I may make amends here, we have to infer into part of your time. I just want to, just refill the record, the letter that I received by email at approximately shortly after 4:00 PM on Thursday, January 3rd, from Brian Nelson, who would be attorney for the Township of Middletown. And this date of January 3rd is addressed to Mr. Gallagher, Business Administrator. Is copied to Heidi Brunt, Township Clerk, and to the Township Administrator, and myself, Lester Taylor, Councilor of the School Board, Reaches Foss. Here is Mr. Gallagher. As you know, this office represents the township, the Middletown Township. In accordance with the provisions of NJSA 19160-1.1b1, the Township hereby provides the Middletown Township Board of Education with notice that the Township Committee of the Township of Middletown will be holding its annual reorganization meeting on January 6, 2019 at 10 AM in the Court of Town Hall, One Kings Highway, Middletown, New Jersey, 07748. Please be advised that at the foregoing meeting, the Township Committee of the Township of Middletown intends to consider adoption of the attached resolution moving the annual school election for the Middletown Township Board of Education from the November general election to the April annual school election for the reasons set forth therein. Please note that to take the contact, my office will any questions. Again, that was sent to the Board of Education by hand delivery after 4:00 PM next to the office business on Thursday afternoon expressing the Township of Middletown's intent to consider said resolution today. That resolution did not set forth any prior conversations and/or attempts to discuss the movement of the election with this Board of Education before the governing body acted on a resolution to change the election, which arguably, from a legal standpoint, I say arguably because there are arguments this Board believes it has good base, there are meritorious to challenge said action in a court of law. And so this Board of Education, acting upon the vice counsel in consultation with their administration, felt it necessary to call this meeting, exhaust every effort I previously set forth on the record to advertise it in order to pass the resolution formally expressing its opposition to the election being moved for all of the reasons set forth in the resolution. If and when, if and when and/or if, or when this Board passes its resolution that went into today, it does not preclude continued discussion. It just starts discussion with our position, which is reasonable, which is ethical, which is effective.
Mr. Rogers, the primary, and response to Mr. Taylor. I am no attorney and I don't press the B1, and I never would do so. But what I can say is, I'm not sure, Mr. Taylor, you weren't at the meeting on Wednesday evening, I don't believe. But it was upon the public legal advice, upon that was professed in public with respect to being first to adopt a resolution, whereas the Township Committee's meeting on the next available Township Committee meeting was, is scheduled for January 22nd, normally January 21st, but the holiday moving into the 22nd. And the discussion of moving this resolution to January 15th, this proposed resolution that was, I believe, correct if I'm wrong, voted on eight with one extension, a abstention to draft or to provide your office the ability to draft that resolution in opposition and a legal opinion in public that that such resolution would prohibit the Township Committee from taking any further action, whether that was good legal advice and bad or otherwise, I'm not going to opine. But that was why this Township Committee took the step to protect our rights as a governing body that next day. So with that said, I think it's counterproductive to move backwards. I've given you my boards, my, I've given you my word as to I will make the motion to table our resolution. I know that I will have unanimous support to do so pending the outcome and thoughts of working together with this Board. But what I cannot do is put my Board in any precarious legal position that would ultimately put us in a lower or a, put us in a weaker legal position by this resolution or whatever action you take today. I can't promise the decision if...
And we would never ask you to do this. This is, this is not legally binding. So the public understands, this resolution is not legally binding. It's just to support our consensus that we want our elections to be in November. We wouldn't put you in that position. We look forward to working with you in the future. And I'm wondering if we could ask if you would take it off the agenda for your meeting at 10 AM.
Well, I would ask Mr. Taylor if your action today puts the Township Committee in any potential weaker legal standard by doing so.
I respect, I can't answer that question. That's the question from Mr. Nelson. I'll just reiterate that based upon my understanding of the law with respect to changing the election back to April. There is no recognition of today's resolution by this Board. However, from a procedural standpoint, it's something that I believe is necessary and required just to further this district's, this Board's interest. But again, if this Board passes this resolution, simply as indicated, stating its preference that the election, Board of Education election dates in November, that will not prohibit the Township Committee from taking whatever action if it is necessary and/or even if it passes this resolution today and you table the resolution to a future date, it will prohibit the Township Committee from acting at some later time, similarly in ways that are over from acting at later time if it decides to change course and move the election back. All of those days that the discussion, I am aware of the discussion is at December meeting. The issue was a duly advertised regular meeting of Board of Education, as you're of sure aware, and the issue at this point is generally not being discussed and held for comment. And we're asked upon at a regularly called meeting. But I would still admit also that there would have and/or could have been attempts to meet and/or schedule special meetings sometime after January 6th and before January 21st, if that was in concern.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tony. I'd like to open the mic for further public comment, please.
Hi, my name is Rachel Knopka. I was at the meeting last week, and I know I've been talking to you guys and formally here and there. From the public's perspective, which is what I kind of want to talk about, we need to feel that the Board of Ed and the Township Committee can work together. We're paying our money, a lot of it, into a big pot that you guys both manage. And I think what we've seen happening over the past week is alarming in that it seems like there's not consensus there. And I understand there's a lot of keys that she said about how we got to this point. I just hope that moving forward, you can show the public that these two groups can work together for the better of our kids, for the better of our town, and so that we know our taxes are being spent well. I understand that procedurally, if this resolution gets passed today by you guys, it doesn't have legal, it's not legally binding. However, it is kind of a gesture to the public and to the Township Committee, I think, that you guys are trying to kind of put your flag in the sand. And as much as I hear you saying, we want to have a dialogue about this, the conversation won't be over, et cetera, et cetera. By saying, this is our stance, you're showing us that maybe you're not open to hearing, because you already said this is our position. You're not insinuating that there might be a chance where you're going to listen to the different arguments. And I think one thing that I know after looking more into it since the Wednesday meeting, this is a foreign issue. It's not just, let's move the elections to April. There are a lot of involved things regarding the budget, visibility into the budget, the vote. There's a whole bunch of issues. And I feel like it's important for both groups and for the public to realize the number of issues that are in play and hopefully have a conversation about each one individually, get input on each one individually to determine how do we move forward. And it might not be a black and white, all one way, all the other. There's some compromise that could happen there. So just from an optics perspective, I think it's critical that both boards show the public that you are willing to pause, discuss this rationally, take the time, not rush into anything, and work together with the public's input about what would happen next. So that's my only ask of all you. I realize procedurally, if you put your thing down today, it means you kept a door open for the future, blah, blah, blah. But I think the symbolic gesture it makes is a little more harmful than the procedural benefit you would get out of it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good morning, I'm Alan Nelson. Thank you all for being here on a Sunday. I'm loving the other call of duty. So I would just talk about the substance of the issue. I know there's a lot of discussion about the procedures in the office. But I think as far as an opinion about the substance, I'm in favor of keeping the elections in November. I think as a citizen, I think it creates more participation in elections. Obviously, there's a cost factors this. And at this time, in particular, when our budgets are really very tight, I think to add another $40,000 we should really use to help our town is really not good stewardship. So also considering a day off possibly for kids is also, I think the Board has worked very hard to maintain a calendar reasonable and early. So I think that's also not a great use of our students' time. Not to speak of the inconvenience for the voters of having to schedule and come out for another day with jobs and maintaining, et cetera. So the arguments that are very in favor of moving the election are very valid. I think citizens are concerned about having more informed citizenry. Part of me feels like this is very valid, and there's certain forums, and there are other ways to address that rather than less, et cetera, less than equality. Not necessarily. I think the primaries do show that informed constituencies come out, and these voters can be more ideological. And also the greater need for transparency about the budget, which can be addressed through pick and/or more detailed involvement. Is my time off there? Is that your...
That was just my fault.
Oh, okay. All right. So I think on the merits, I would like the Board to maintain the status quo. And I think a vote today should not signal, you know, that, you know, we're at war now. I think a vote today just maintains what we've always done. And I think continues to open the door for continued dialogue. And at the end of the day, I, we have voted for you to protect our interests. And I, so I do hope that you will vote to just maintain the elections where they are and continue to discuss, of course, have a great relationship with the Township Committee and understand their side of the story and allow that to proceed. So that's one voter's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Tricia McGuire. I'm a little confused about what my public comments will mean moving forward. I'm actually a little confused about the legalities of all of this. But for what it's worth, my concern is that we've had to gather here on a Sunday, call a special meeting, whether we agree about that or not. And when I hear the word resolution, I really believe it means resolved. And I believe that we are resolved to maintain the election as it is. I think it's in the best interest of voters to have a day where we know we're coming out to vote. I think it does mean that you're informed and concerned. And anyway, the lack of view of why keep the election in November is not what I'd like to speak to. It's really about process. And the process is that you guys have tried to make it so that we would have conversation ongoing by announcing at the last meeting that we would have conversation on January 15th. 15th. And so personally, my observation of the Township Committee acting quickly to have an agenda item added to a previously scheduled meeting this weekend is nothing more than a power grab. I don't understand what power they were after, but it definitely seems like that. And so I also would encourage you today to vote and to remain resolved to protect the rights of us as voters. Thank you.
Hi, Denise Thompson. Thanks for coming today. It's unfortunate that we had to do this emergency meeting. I am amazed at how fast we can move though, so let's get to know the future topics. I agree with Rachel's sentiments in that I think a pause would be beneficial in that the history is that we've had some struggles with the Township Committee. So if there's an opportunity to sort of put the egos aside for the sake of the children and have a dialogue, I think that's important. I think some of this kind of came from this election where an individual was able to obtain almost 8,000 votes when they didn't show any interest in our school system. That's concerning to me as someone who is intimately involved. And so I think that there's dialogue. So I think the good thing that's come out of this is the silver lining, let's talk about that. That kind of stuff shouldn't happen. I don't know, wait, maybe pass it in November, maybe we get rid of bracketing, political funding for Board of Education members. So I think it's important to have that dialogue and to pause. It's the election's next day in November, and maybe there's some sort of conversations to be had to sort of change the things that happened in November. So I would just encourage you to do that, and I appreciate you having these conversations prior to the meeting and sort of extending the olive branch. I think that's the reason I think the public will do that.
My name is Danielle Walsh. I didn't have any real intention of speaking today, but something someone said just jarred something that I have a question more than anything for Mr. Taylor. And I hope you'll allow me to ask a question and then speak based on your answer. Can you pass the resolution today and then continue dialogue and pull it later?
Yes.
Yes, you can. My personal opinion, based on maybe a quote that Ms. Griffin in the audience says all the time, "Past is prologue." Our relationship with the Township Committee has been tough. It's definitely been contentious. There is a trust that needs to be built there. I want you to do that. I don't think passing this resolution is putting a flag on the ground. I think it's protecting yourselves. I would encourage you to pass the resolution, but make sure that you express to the Township Committee that it isn't a flag on the ground, that it really is that you are open to a conversation. And if for some reason you think that, you know, this needs to come to a vote by the public or however it needs to be done, you can always go back and pull it. It's not legally binding. It's just a safeguard. It's just a safeguard that you're all on the same page today. But you can always pull it. So that's just my two cents. And congratulations, Steph and Tom, I'm sorry to get to see you.
It's Mrs. Griffin. I had absolutely no intention of speaking today. I have to pass his prologue. However, you had somebody, and I will give Mrs. Walsh credit for that, that we all know that there have been contentious relationships between Board of Education and the Township Committee. You just had a member of the Township Committee here stating that they wanted to work with you. They asked you to table this, and they said that they would table it on merit. What's the problem? You can always revisit this. They asked you to work with them. Anybody?
I think it's important to remember that we are willing to work with them whether or not we pass this resolution today. I think that's very important. Also, Mr. Fury did say something that I think we're all forgetting. He said, "I have no intention of cutting any board members' term short." So, Mr. Fury, they have no intention of moving the elections to April at this point. And he's made that very clear to me at 15:00 during our meeting. So all we're doing is protecting ourselves. It is for the future. And I hope that we will be at a shared services meeting on the 14th on Monday, and we'll all be discussing this.
Okay, yeah, but Mrs. Ross, what I've just gotten out of this is listening to what they've just said. They're willing to work with you if you stop right now. But if you pass this, then they're going to pass that, and we escalate and escalate and escalate. So that's just, that's not what he said at all.
If I may, I don't share respectfully, it's not often that I try to interject with the chairperson, but public comment is not a back and forth.
You're right. And you're absolutely right, and I know that very well.
Just, I'm fully told to her.
I didn't want to be here. I was brought up.
Just for the record, if this meeting had not been called and presumptively, the resolutions would have been passed by the governing body. So just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it seems, well, I don't want to say it when I was in focus, but speaking more importantly, I'll just read the time. It's now about 9:30 AM. I would recommend that the board go into a brief executive session, discuss matters of attorney-client privilege and anticipated litigation strategy concerning the movement of the election, keeping in mind that there is a Township municipal meeting at 10:00 AM. And I would like to try to have those discussions and figure out what we're going to do and upon advice of counsel before 10:00 AM, so that we can send a message and we'll get to that meeting.
Does that mean we can take this?
Yes, because it's going to be attorney-client privilege and litigation strategy, so that it will be a public...
All right, so are we going to be able to talk about this meeting, because there's a message about people who may want to go for that re-open meeting?
That's what I'm trying to say, let's get moving.
All right, so let me see, we have a conversation about, I think, some changes in terms of some information, so I'd like to talk about that. I don't want to be...
I'll take the last public comment, and then...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. I just want to state to the record, and I wrote a few words, I don't often come or speak, but this felt imminent, that it seems to me, humbly, that this has been a direct issue with the Township Committee not being thrilled with the result of the last two elections. And now you would like to take $40,000 of our taxpayer dollars to move an election to April. This move would allow the candidates to, or the Town Committee to better support the candidates that they would like to recognize, my children, in the board. That's very much not okay with me. Furthermore, the data supports that a November election ensures maximum voter turnout. And as a result, gives the taxpayer, myself, the optimal opportunity to exercise our voices. Finally, it appears to me that I might want to say this feels like hypocrisy, that the Town Committee, which also appears as a partisan governing body, at this point is accusing the Board of Ed, a non-partisan governing body, of being political in these elections. I feel that the Board of Ed's record in voting speaks for itself, that there is no evidence of voting in blocks, as we've seen in the past, or on party lines. The vote, I feel, that is represented in my Board of Ed, that I voted for, shows individuals that vote their conscience, and all of the evidence supports it, in the videos, in the minutes, and if those of you who aren't working with myself are lucky enough to attend the meeting themselves. Thank you. That's all for now.
Right, Madam Chair, I'm seeing no more members of the public approaching the mic. I would require the board to sit in a motion to go into a closed executive session, discuss matters of attorney-client privilege and Board of Education strategy concerning the potential movement of the annual school board election from November to December. Minutes will be taken in at least to the public, given the need for confidentiality or if it exists, and action may be taken by the board when it begins the public session. I would anticipate the closed session to last about 10 minutes or so.
I saw maybe that, Sam, can we make sure that it's 10 minutes?
Absolutely. 10 minutes, I love.
Well, that's...
All right. So we have a motion, do you have any seconds?
Seconds.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I need a motion to table this resolution.
If we could, this is a public vote, we can do a public session. So motions are, reopen the public session.
Followed.
Discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Re-stand the public session.
Okay. I need a motion to table this resolution based on Mr. Fury's comments, in the hopes that our two governing bodies can work together at our next meeting.
I signed the motion. So I think the motion was promptly seconded by this newest, second member, Donald. The table is, it's to table it until the 15th, I believe, is the next Board of Education meeting, with the understanding that if there is a desire of the municipal governing body to change the election from November to April, I'm sorry, if there is an intention to change the election from November to April, there will be some dialogue and conversation between the Shared Services Committee of the two bodies and the administrations and board members between them.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call vote? Mrs. Hamley?
Yes.
Mr. DePico?
Yes.
Mr. Donald?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Menues?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
No.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open to public comment. It's going to take 30 minutes. I want to thank you all for coming together today. As a voter, we spend a lot of money on this town with all these people who came on a Sunday morning, to thank you for working together, to be good five-year-olds in a toy box, sharing your cookies and the toys together with the Township Committee. We all have one cookie to share, and I hope you guys figure out how to share it equally and kindly while you teach all the little kids in this district. Thank you. Hi, Ms. Griffin. Thank you for telling me. Thank you for having me. And thank you for your follow-up.
Hi, I'm Rachel Knopka. I just want to echo thank you. I know that this is a very tough way to start off the year, and I just appreciate the time and effort you guys put into this. Working with the Township Committee, I think, can only yield good things for the public, and I know it might not be the easiest thing, but establishing trust between the two bodies is critical. It's the only way it's going to work. So I think you've shown today that you have trust for them, and the 10 o'clock meeting will hopefully show the same in reverse. And I just appreciate it. To the extent that you need public involvement, I'm more than willing to volunteer. I know many others are as well. Thank you very much.
Seeing no other members, seeing no other members in the public or leaving comments from board members?
I mean, I would like to make a comment again. I think there's been a lot said about the relationship with the Township Committee. I don't know where that comes from. I've never had a problem as a board member or resident of the Township Committee. I don't know where that sort of comes out of, but I just want to, I don't want to get people who's pressively applied and have some kind of automatic issues with, because I personally don't. So when we say that, I think that when talking about topics like this, I think there are a lot of different opinions, and I think it's good that they're aired in the right way, timelines are straightened out and whatnot. So hopefully, we can have meaningful discussions that serve the public. But I think the idea that there's been some kind of hostility is always, I don't think is, from my only view, I mean, other folks have had different...
I think it's important to note a couple of things. As the chairman of the Shared Services Committee, as well as a taxpayer and a member of this Board of Education, I think this vote that we just saw illustrates and should illustrate to the Township that we are not a homogeneous nine-member board that does everything along certain lines. I think that was clearly illustrated, and I think that that's healthy. I think that all of you who come to these meetings know that we dissent and disagree, and we try to come to consensus. We've been publicly louted for our ability to conduct ourselves professionally and to respect our taxpayers, which is something as the year starts that I want us to continue. I think that this is a topic that is of primary importance going forward, given the state's approach to funding. I think that the idea of the budget, having more transparency and being discussed in public and potentially ratified in public is worth the discussion. I personally don't believe it's worth a separate election, but that's my opinion. And I think the last point I want to make is that opinions change. I think that this board voiced its opinion, even though we did not make a resolution. Everybody's pretty clear where the board stands and where the board members stand, but not one of my other eight colleagues here do I know as the person who will plant their flag in the sand and never move it. These are, you know, maybe myself accepted, but these are eight very reasonable, very hardworking and diligent members of our community. And so I think it's very important for all of you who come, you know, every couple, every couple weeks, every month, to understand that we'll continue to work for you, and this topic will not just sort of fizzle away.
One last thing, too. Having the opportunity to meet with the Township Committee this morning, I'm cautiously optimistic that this is a really positive step forward in working together for our taxpayers, for the children, and, you know, regardless of when each of us wants the election. So, thanks.
I'd like to say something. I think that this whole circumstance has brought to light, especially to me, that the public, a lot of the public proposes us as being a political stand. Like, obviously, we've heard comments today about politics on the school board. I think the nine of us have to work harder together to prove to the community that we are not putting politics in the school boards, that we are working for the best interest of our students and our taxpayers. And to me, I really did get a strong opinion that the community feels that we are putting politics at the table. And I would like to see us work harder to change that perception. And I also have another suggestion. I don't think that we should start out with the Township with a dodgeball game. I would recommend bowling.
But if I love this.
I just wanted to say that having the Township come this morning and meet with Ms. Rogers and Ms. Stella demonstrated both, and this is my view, humility and integrity. Okay? I just see that the Township is eager to try to get past this and to work together and see what we can do about these elections, and hopefully, it's best served by a dialogue that's going to happen in the next two weeks or so. And that really, you know, I've been on this board for a number of years, and what I can't stand is when somebody brings politics into the Board of Education. You know, there is no place for politics in the Board of Education or any Board of Education.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just want the public to know, this wasn't about for me, an election. It had nothing to do with whether the election was November or April. Doesn't matter to me, one way or the other, you get elected either way. You go out of the campaign, people, elections, they want you. What it's about to me, I've been on the board when we voted for a budget, and we didn't vote for a budget. And I've seen what it does when we bring people together from the middle-town community, the parents. It's amazing what our parents can bring to the table when we sit down and do a budget together. And that's what it was about. Most people that are sitting up here right now have not worked on a budget with the community and seen what the parents of this community bring to the table. You want to talk about seeing transparency and seeing a budget? Dr. George, your staff does a wonderful job with the budget, but it never worked with our community the way I'm talking about. this on the 15th if the town council decides to just postpone their vote to move this year, 2019 election from November to April. So if they say, you know what, let's just leave it alone for now, you can talk about this in March or April and have a more robust conversation. So table it, and you may not even need to vote on it on the 15th if the township council said, you know what, let's take it back.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about like what the topic will be discussed, you can talk about the pros and cons about things that you see.
That's how we left this, this afternoon meeting, that we were going to have a meeting of the board members to discuss how they each felt. And then I watched the tapes, and Ellen recommended it, Nick and I agreed with it, and it didn't happen. So, which, it needs to happen.
If I could just make a comment before we break, because I know people are getting ready to leave. First of all, to the Board of Education, I'd like to, volunteers, I'm very grateful for your time on the weekend, to our administrative team for all your reference and support, appreciate it very much. To the people who came and spoke, thank you. Our community is as dedicated as our board and our staff, so I for one am grateful to work in this environment. I'd also like to say to the new people in the audience on Sunday, welcome.